Called to order the meeting of the common council for Tuesday, November 19, 2019.
eleven, our present your honor with Alder Nicholson absent.
All right, please rise for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for an invocation led by the Alder from the 10th.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is my letter, it goes like this. Paul in a letter to the Philippians wrote, "Do not be anxious about anything but in every situation by prayer and petition. With Thanksgiving, present your requests to God." In the spirit of this message with Thanksgiving right around the corner, I have a number of things that I am truly thankful for. One, to my wife Martha, son Ian and his friend Becca, daughter Emily and numerous siblings and relatives. Two, to my good friends, you know who they, you know who you are. Three, to my fellow Alders, mayor and city leaders and employees who espouse to the notion of customer service. Number four, to the many citizens of Green Bay, including District 10, who keep me informed, grounded and enlightened. Number five, to the neighbors who are discordant, thus challenging me to use civility, compromise and hope in the pursuit of conflict resolution. Number six, to all veterans who have made my life of freedom a distinct reality. Number seven, to the freedom to worship, to speak, to assemble and to proactively work on making the home, the neighborhood and the city and beyond, a better place for us all, without the fear of persecution and in the hope for unity. And finally, to the gift of life and to the gift of love, I truly am thankful. That's it.
Thank you, Alder. And to approval of the minutes. Motion made by Alder from the 7th, seconded by Alder from the 5th. Any corrections that need to be made? Seeing no requests, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Minutes have been approved. Approval of the agenda. Motion by Alder from the 7th, seconded by Alder from the 1st. Any revisions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those pose nay. The ayes have it. Onto the report by the mayor. So in our, during our last meeting, there was some discussion of the invocation. And so I just wanted to reiterate what, what I suggested at the beginning of my tenure, which is the way that I would prefer to handle it is rotating it through council. You know, this is not my body, this is the council chambers, and I feel it's appropriate to rotate that responsibility and share it with you all. So I think tonight was a great example of, of one option that, that you all can take. Another one is a moment of silence, and the third one, which has also been, has been used by other Alders, is to bring somebody in from the community that represents the diversity of the faith traditions here in the city. So just wanted to reiterate that all for you as, as council and also for the public. And then just a couple of notes on some events that are occurring in the community. Peace tree lighting tomorrow night over at the courthouse, encouraging everyone who is available to attend. Also Light Up Broadway, which is on Friday, November 22nd. Then we of course have the holiday parade on the 23rd, Saturday morning. And then Garden of Lights over at Green Bay Botanical on, on November 25th. I think this is our last council meeting, of course, before Thanksgiving, so also wanted to take the opportunity to wish happy Thanksgiving to all of the council members and all the public who are tuning in tonight. That concludes my report. Onto announcements. Alder from the 7th.
Thank you, your honor. Just one tonight, one announcement. Yes, just one. Levittamp.org, levitt, L-E-V-I-T-T-A-M-P.org. Tomorrow is the last chance to vote, to get some music to Green Bay, so please, if you haven't voted, go vote.
How many times can you vote?
To what time?
I said how many times can you vote?
You can vote once, only once.
Per?
Per, per. Uh, uh, email address.
Yes, that's right.
So, uh, if you got a lot of email addresses, or if you want to get a lot of email addresses, now's the time to do it. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Alder. Alder from the 10th.
Thank you, your honor. I just wanted to thank Public Works for their diligence on leaf pickup this week. We had a lot of citizens that were very concerned, and I want to thank Director Grenier and Director Pearlott and their staff for a job well done. Thank you.
Well said, Alder. Any other announcements? Onto appointments. I will entertain a motion. Motion made by Alder from the 7th, seconded by Alder from the 1st to confirm the reappointment of Jim DuBois to the Downtown Business Improvement District. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those pose nay. The ayes have it, and that item has been approved. Entertain another motion on new appointments. Motion by, motion made by Alder from the 1st, seconded by Alder from the 6th, to confirm the new appointments. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, the item has been approved. Onto public hearings. We have two items for public hearings. Is there anyone here who would like to speak regarding these items? Anyone here who would like to speak regarding these items? Is there anyone here who would like to speak regarding these items? Clerk, please let the record reflect that no one appeared to speak to either of these items. Onto ordinance's second reading for adoption.
You may, under suspension of the rules, take up items 1 through 3 with a roll call vote.
Second.
Motion made by Alder from the 7th, seconded by Alder from the 10th to suspend the rules, take up these items with one roll call vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, the rules are suspended. Motion made by Alder from the 7th, seconded by Alder from the 10th to adopt items J1 through J3. Please use the board on this item.
She's froze. You're okay now? Okay.
And they passed 12-0. Onto report of the redevelopment authority. Motion made by Alder from the 1st, seconded by Alder from the 7th to approve Report K, which is the report of the redevelopment authority from the meeting on November 12, 2019. Any items under this report you wish to handle separately? Hearing none, all in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, the report has been approved. Onto report of the Improvement and Services Committee. Motion made by Alder from the 7th, seconded by Alder from the 8th to approve Report L, which is the report of the Improvement and Services Committee from the meeting on November 12, 2019. Any items under this report you wish to handle separately? Item 4. Any others? Item 4 will be handled separately. Hearing none, others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye. Pose nay. The ayes have it, the report has been approved with the exception of item 4. Your wishes regarding item 4. Alder from the 7th.
I would like to raise the rates, the monthly and the yearly rate. We did this at our budget meeting, and if we don't do this now, we're going to have over a million size hole in our budget. So I'd like to raise the monthly rate from 8.59 to 9.84, 984.
That's an amendment?
That's an amendment. Well, not an amendment, I want to change. amend, I guess amend, yes.
Do we have a second? Seconded.
Yep. The yearly rate would go from $103.04 to $118.05, which will put 1.189 million back into our budget.
Very good. Any discussion on that item? Alder from the 9th.
Thank you, mayor. I was the one at the committee level who had made the motion to adjust this rate, and I want to be able to just at least have an opportunity to explain why. So the amount of money that I had, the motion, my motion was to basically eliminate the amount of funding that was required to transfer the forestry department to the stormwater utility. While I understand that this body had approved the budget on a vote of 7 to 5, my principled objection to the budget really had to do with the forestry department transfer. And I think that there was just a, when you talk about this as a broader policy move, I've just always been a believer that that deserved, I think, some greater public discussion around that particular issue. And I don't think that it got that because it was kind of hidden a little bit within the overall context of the budget. Some of the numbers that I had kind of shared at the committee level, when you look at the aggregate amount, and I believe my math on this is correct, when you look at the aggregate amount, aggregate amount that we've raised through stormwater utility fees over the last 10 years, it has increased by 95%. The rate over the last four years, including this proposal, would raise by 65%. Those are some pretty substantial increases that really have not had a high degree of discussion by this body. And that, I think, is the piece that just concerned me in terms of wanting to slow this down. Now, I spoke at the budget meeting, as well as at the committee level, that this was the danger of passing a budget that was contingent on a future action of council, and that future action, of course, being the passage of this stormwater increase. So if this body today, for any reason, were to choose, you know, to, to not raise those rates, of course, it would create that hole in our budget, and that's the discussion that I'm looking to pursue. There, comparatively speaking, when you look at the wheel tax, I mean, and I know this was made public and it was reported, but there's a difference between kind of reporting and having a, a public discussion about it. The wheel tax, I recall in particular, was a $20 fee. It went over the course of, gosh, probably a couple of years, I mean, right, kind of off and on and, and, and at least minimally, had a couple of months of discussion before we ultimately voted on it. But I felt it was a good process, the public was well informed, they had an opportunity to weigh in, and ultimately we passed a $20 fee that was very clear about where that funding was going. Now, in this particular instance, we're looking at an average, I believe it was reported, and anyone feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but it was $25 per household, so very comparable, right? But we didn't have a discussion either about what that impact, that fiscal impact, could be on all users, including nonprofits, churches, commercial users. And so I haven't really seen personally, I guess, any type of impact report on that front. We haven't heard a lot of outcry on this because I'm not sure that a lot of people understand what is happening here. And so there was certainly one way that I think we could have addressed this at budget time. And, and again, it didn't happen, and that's why we're here right now. We did have, and Diana, Director Ellen Becker had talked about this, we had about, we had income coming in and income going out with respect to the overtime on the fire department. And that amount was roughly $550,000. One of the things that we could have done through the budgeting process is eliminated that in and out. And of course, what the value of that would have been is it gets us around the expenditure restraint. And that is what would have allowed us to have that, I mean, it would have allowed us to add another $550,000 to the levy. We could have had that discussion, but we didn't. We opted not to, and we opted to automatically make the assumption that this would go through stormwater. And then, of course, from there, we could have had the discussion about how do you close the gap from 550 to 1.189. So here we are. And it's why I'm opposing the amendment, it's why I support the original motion as it was reported by committee. And I just wanted to, again, provide a little bit of clarity in terms of why I'm voting the way that I'm voting. Thank you, mayor.
Alder from the 12th.
Thank you, mayor. I was unable to attend the INS meeting, but I, I watched it and I understand Alder Johnson's line of reasoning. But I also understand that Director Grenier is not present, he's excused. So I, I guess if I have a question, I could direct it to either Assistant Director Burnett, not related, by the way, or Mr. Heckin-Liebel, who I see is here. In determining the ERU, could you go over that process briefly? How did you, how, how does the city determine what a ERU is?
An ERU was established by the ordinance when the stormwater utility was created back in 2003, 2004, and it was deemed to be 3,000 square feet of impervious area. We then took a map of the city to determine the quantity of ERUs within the city, and that is how we came up with the 79,250 ERUs throughout the city. So the 3,000 comparison of what an average typical lot would be, residential lot, would be 3,000 square feet of impervious area.
Is pervious area factored into how the ERU is calculated?
The, an ERU is an equivalent runoff unit, which is 3,000 square feet of impervious area.
But is, but I guess my question is, is pervious area meaning green space, lawns?
That would make up the difference of a residential parcel or any parcel.
When the, when ERUs were originally determined, was there any consideration on trees being part of pervious or impervious material?
I cannot speak for that as I wasn't part of the original draft or the ord, of the ordinance or the creation of the stormwater utility.
Thank you. This is my main concern, is that we, we're increasing the ERU monthly charge and yearly charge to, you know, natural increases in stormwater maintenance, but we're also transferring the cost for the forestry department to or from the stormwater utility, however you want to think about it. And as we determine the ERUs, if we're going to use the rationale that trees, street trees absorb stormwater, which you can make the case, of course, when we determine the ERU, we then have to factor in residents who have trees on their property because that absorbs the stormwater. And again, I read the ordinance, the word forestry was included twice, but never once did I see the word trees. I could be wrong, I didn't read it through at a second time. But if we're going to adopt an ERU increase, we need to amend the ordinance to more accurately reflect how ERU is calculated. Otherwise, for all constituents and property owners who have trees, who are now, we are going on the assumption that trees collect stormwater, we need to offer some sort of credit because, in my opinion, that's a pervious vegetation. So I'm against the motion on that basis alone. We need to amend the ordinance, in my opinion. And I'd be surprised that, I'm surprised that more members of the council don't see it that way. We can make this change, we can make the rationale, that's fine, but the ordinance should be amended so that we can more accurately reflect how our ERU is determined. So I'm, I'm against the motion. Commend Alder Johnson for moving forward in this manner because we need to have this discussion a little more in depth. Thank you.
Alder from the 11th.
Thank you, mayor. I'm not in favor of filling our budget through the stormwater. This is not a very popular tax to begin with. You know, to add another $25 per year on top of what people are already paying. I, I think we could find a better way to fill it, fill the hole that's there. I, I think that, you know, from larger businesses, they pay thousands of dollars. You know, they have large parking lots, they pay a large amount of money. And I think it's a burden on, there's 33, I think there's 33,000 parcels in the city of Green Bay, roughly. And, you know, grant you, you know, the $25 that they're raising it for the average homeowner, but for businesses, it's going to be much more. And I, I think that, you know, we should look at how we're going to move forward as far as, you know, not adding tax, but you know, with the stormwater. I think it, you know, we have to take another look at how we're doing our taxation and how we're doing our services. And, you know, just to keep adding on year after year, more tax, I, I don't feel it's the right message we want to send to the taxpayers. You know, if we come next year with another budget increase, you know, a tax increase, you know, people aren't going to be real happy about it. I don't think they're happy about any increase, to be honest with you. You know, if you look at all the, the different tools that are put on the, on the tax bill, you know, you got your NWTC, you got the schools, you got the county, you add them all up, that's, that's where our base, you know, per, per thousand. If it's 25 or 26 dollars per thousand, you know, for a hundred thousand dollars, it's 2,500 dollars tax. You know, and I, I think a lot of people that are, you know, a lot of people are on fixed incomes and, you know, most of your landlords, you know, if they, if they get a tax increase, they slap it right onto their tenants. So it, it's a burden all the way around. So I think that, you know, if we have to cut things, you know, maybe that's what we should be looking at, you know, in the future, how we're going to, how we're going to manage our money. And this, I think this is not a real good way to, to do it, you know, just to put it on the stormwater sewer, you know, tax, on top of what we're paying already. I can't support it. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder from the 3rd.
Thanks, mayor. I got a couple of questions. I was just wondering if someone could answer these. I'll, I'll just offer them up and see if you can get some answers.
Can you direct your questions to staff, Alder?
Whoever can answer them, you or staff, or an alderman. Do apartments in, in Green Bay, do they receive commercial rates or residential rates for water?
Mr. Heckin-Liebel?
Are you talking water or stormwater?
Well, it's do both.
I am not aware of water utility rates, if there is a difference between commercial and residential. As far as stormwater utility rates, it is one fee for all classes of development. So residential and commercial are the same rate.
For stormwater?
For stormwater, correct.
So in an apartment complex, let's say 16 units, 20 units, they have the same as a household then?
Correct.
Okay, and then with, is there fees on any of the stormwater?
The stormwater development fee or ERU charge is the only fee post-development.
Now, on an apartment complex, is there one fee for the 16 units, or does it, each 16 unit have a fee?
It is whatever the parcel, as many units on a parcel.
Okay, so if there's 16 apartments, I'm taking for an example, Matt, all 16 get a separate fee?
It would be based on the water meter. So if one water meter is servicing 16 apartments and it is X amount of ERUs, that one charge would go to that one water bill. How the property owner then divvies it up to his tenants is up to the property owner.
Okay, so there's one fee to an apartment?
If each unit has an individual water meter, then it would go to each individual water meter.
If there's only one, and then that just goes to one?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Answered my question. Thank you. Thanks, mayor.
Thank you. Alder from the 8th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I voted for this, or not for this particular one, but to reduce it back to our, our original rates. At committee, it came out unanimous. I voted against the, the budget in part because of this. It's a large, very large major shift, really, in, in what we're doing. And it really, looking back, I think we would all agree, should have worked its way through Improvement and Service Committee. Here's why we're doing it, here's the reasons, here's the ramifications, exactly what does it mean? Instead, it really, in the course of a week or two, got introduced and passed, just like that. And I think that's really usurping, and I bet you half the people here, probably including myself, still don't understand exactly what this means or what it does. And we're trying to, to peck at it, but if it had gone through committee, we really could have looked at, okay, what, what does this mean to the average homeowner, and is this the way we really want to go? I hope it doesn't open the door for lots of other things to be shifted on to, into this area. So I, I'm going to vote against it for the reasons that were said before me. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder. Alder from the 10th.
Thank you, your honor. This was not an easy budget to go through, and believe me, I took this vote seriously as well. And I, you know, I, I look back at our eight to 10 years where we didn't raise taxes very much. And I, you know, it's easy to look at it now and say that incrementally, we should have done this at a 1 or 1 and 1/2 percent over that time period. We, we didn't do that. I guess, you know, Alder Johnson, I appreciate, you know, you're talking about, you know, the 500,000 in fire overtime. You know, a lot of the overtime that seems to be out there takes care of the fact that we don't have to hire additional employees. And, you know, the overtime is there to, you know, in times of crisis or kinds, in times of need. Also, listening to Alder Burnett's talk about the trees, I've got 10 trees on my property. I'd love to have those included too, as well. But I don't know how long that would even take to try to do that study. I was not at INS, so I, I didn't have a chance to, you know, a lot of this is kind of hitting me right now. And I, I'm, I have a hard time trying to digest that. I realize that there's a bit of a shift, Alder Johnson, as far as doing this, you know, policy change. I know other communities have done it. I don't know if it was so much out of expedience or desperation that they did it. But I don't know, I'm just having, I don't know how, how we're going to do this unless we bring the budget back, you know, and, and start all over. You know, I, I don't know what kind of timeframe there is with something like that. We have to kind of get forward and move forward, but if we have to start looking at policy changes, that may take some time. I don't know if you have a thought on that, but I'm not trying to avoid the problem because I know that there's a big issue out there, but I really don't know how to really go forward with this, you know, besides just going the way we did. So at this time, I would oppose that as well. Thank you.
Alder from the 1st.
Well, I'm certainly in favor of the, of the amendment that, that I seconded. I take a bit of exception to saying that this, this was hidden. Had everyone attended the budget hearing, they would have been involved in a rich discussion on why this was necessary. And that occurred a week before the actual budget vote. So that was, would have been an important place to have that discussion, and that is the purpose of that hearing. I don't, I, I've, I've researched today what equivalent service units are, the ERUs. And, and I think that it, it is kind of a tough concept. I know about 80% of municipalities use the ERU, and it's, it's an area proportional. It doesn't mean that each house is, is, gets the same charge. It doesn't mean that each apartment, whatever, it's, it's proportional to the amount of land that is impervious, that does not absorb water. So it's a different charge, smaller lot, smaller charge. Well, or not, unless the smaller lot is completely blacktopped, and then it's all impervious. So, you know, it's really kind of hard to say, but we have looked at it and we have, Alders are correct, it's about $25 on average for each household. So we, when we pass the budget, we passed the revenue sources. That, that was passed last week, and, and a 7 to, to 5 vote. And I can certainly agree with Alder Burnett about looking at, I'm not sure if it was, is it an ordinance or a policy, Alder Burnett? An ordinance? We certainly can look at that, but for next time, not for this time, this time's over with already. This time, the council, the work of council was done, it was completed last week. And now here we sit again tonight, talking about the same things that were voted down last week. So I would be very much in favor of the amendment. Thank you.
Alder from the 9th.
Thank you, mayor. Just one thing that I forgot to ask, and I'm not sure in your short tenure if you would have the answer to this or not, but feel free to direct if necessary. I know that when, when you and I and Director Ellen Becker met, you know, one of the questions that came up was about the timing of when Improvement and Services would take this issue up because obviously it was scheduled for after the budget meeting, and that was one of the concerns that I had expressed. And I know that Director Ellen Becker had reached out to Director Grenier to ask if it was possible to get on the INS meeting prior to the budget meeting, and Director Grenier at that time had indicated he wasn't prepared to do that, and that's fine. So ultimately, though, my, my question goes at the, I mean, when we're creating budgets that, again, sort of require fee adjustments in the future, is that a, a standard procedure? Or do we ever take up the fee increase proposals prior to the budget proposal? Just looking for some insight on that. Thank you.
Yeah, I did talk to Director Grenier a little bit about that, and he, Mr. Heckin-Liebel can fill in gaps here, but he had suggested that in the future, we would be able to sync up stormwater with adoption of the budget. Sanitary, I think, is another matter, but that's my understanding.
Okay, and I would certainly Okay. And I would certainly appreciate that. And I think in this particular case, and I understand municipalities are oftentimes put in difficult situations. We're clearly not the only one, right, who's done this, and I think there's a reason for it. Uh, and, and one of the things I would really encourage us to talk about is if we need to get our, you know, the state's attention in terms of some of the restrictions that are imposed on local municipalities and how they budget, I would maybe even, um, you know, have that discussion here about whether or not some type of resolution would make sense to ask our state leaders to perhaps revisit or modify some of those restrictions that are put in place. But certainly, I think when we're looking at fees, it would be maybe more of my request that if we're going to make major substantive changes like this, again, that, that, because this is a policy shift, right? This isn't like an inflationary increase. So I would just maybe make that request if there is a possibility, Mayor, to, you know, to have the committees take up those types of considerations beforehand. I think it would make the whole process a little more seamless. So, thank you.
Noted. Any further comments? All right, motion on the floor is a motion to amend, um, the stormwater utility rates. We have a motion in a second. Board, we'll use the board. Right. Motion is to fully fund stormwater utility with rates suggested by folks from DPW. Motion is successful, seven to five. Is amended. Entertained a motion? Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the fourth to approve. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay?
Nay.
The ayes have it. Onto report of protection and policy. Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the fifth to approve Report M, which is the report of the Protection and Policy Committee from the meeting on November eleventh, twenty nineteen. Any items you wish to handle separately? Item three will be handled separately. Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it. The report has been approved with the exception of item three. Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the first to approve item three. Item was pulled by Alder from the seventh. You have the floor.
Yes, um, we have, staff has prepared a presentation for us on this, so if staff could do that now, thank you.
Thank you, Alder.
So at the Protection and Policy meeting, we went through some standard operating procedures for inspection. And we also showed the Alders how to access information on our website, which is something we wanted to show you tonight, because it's pretty simple. And it would help to get you information quickly if your constituents have questions about properties that are in your district. So, I'm gonna pull that up.
Could I ask Director Rannick which court I'm supposed to plug in here? Do you want to talk? You want me to navigate? Anyone to go through?
I will.
Yeah.
Okay, so everyone goes to the website. If you look on the left-hand side, you'll see a little cloud. So when you click that cloud, you've got the open data portal. That's gonna get you all the information you're looking for. So that, that brings you to an interactive parcel map, police call inquiries. And we set up specifically an inspection tab for you. So if you click on the inspection records, you need to enter an address here. That's why we always say to you it's important to have an address when you call inspection. So, um, we're punching in a property we've been working with at six thirty East Walnut. So just put that address in, and this will pull information up. So you can see there's all kinds of information on this property. So you don't have to just use it for inspections. You can use it for other things as well. So this will give you information about the assessments, the zoning. It'll give you brown county parcel data. And then it also will give you inspection records. So if you click on inspection record, you'll see in the top projects and complaints. Projects refers, refers to building permits. So that's if you've, if you see new construction or people who've pulled out permits to do any type of rehab work. And then on the right-hand side is complaints. If you click on that, you will see all the complaints that have come in on that property. And if you click on one of the pending ones on the right, you'll see closed or pending. If you click on one of those, it will actually bring you up the information. And then you have to scroll down, I think. It will tell you all the times an inspector has been to that site, who the inspector was and what happened, reinspection fees, admin, reinspection. And then it will tell you exactly what was written up on this property. So you can see this, this specific one was innoxious weeds and public nuisance, and it was a complete by date. Now, this is one of our problem properties. We're working with the owner. In fact, he's just got it listed for sale now. But, um, so you could, but this will give you like a to-date, up-to-date account of where we are on this property. So any of you can look that up at any time. So sometimes we'll get emails from Alders that'll be like, hey, what's up with this property? Well, it's gonna take our inspector ten to fifteen minutes to type you a full response when you could just really pull this up. And it'll give you all the information you need, provides you with a picture of the house. Now, these pictures, I think, are from assessment records, so they're dated. But at least will give you some idea that you've got the right property that you've pulled up. And then, do you want to talk about data? We just want to give you some stats on inspection data, so you have some idea of what our inspectors are working on for complaints?
Yeah, our housing and zoning inspectors, just for a frame of reference, in two thousand eighteen, there were thirty-eight hundred complaints that came in, which they had to follow up on. The touchpoints, in other words, phone calls, emails, et cetera, wherever they logged it as, as action in the, in the system that you just saw, there were twenty-two thousand of those logs that they did. In two thousand nineteen, there's about thirty-two hundred complaints, and they logged about twenty-seven thousand action items in their logs. So you can see we're extremely busy following up and seeking compliance.
You know, another thing that was discussed, I think, in Vanessa, Attorney Chavez, if you would be so kind as to share the discussion we had with regards to legislative, administrative, no? Yes?
So what we had discussed at the committee level was that there is, um, in, implicit in this is the distinction between, or the separation of powers. So what we are looking at is the administrative function in setting policy versus the legislative function in setting policy. So the legislature's role is to adopt ordinances, and then when it is time to implement those, the, the departments by necessity have to create policies in order to, to put, to turn those into effect. And so when we are looking at potentially making changes to the process that is being done, it is important to keep in mind whether it's a process that can be, can be changed at the legislative level, level for the purpose of changing it for everybody, or if we're asking for a change to the procedure in which we implement something, or, or, or if it's something that, would result in some inconsistent results, such that we wouldn't want to necessarily change the ordinance. So when we think about it, you have to consider it from the, from the legal perspective of potential for discrimination. So when we are looking at changing the ordinance, it's something that's applied across the entire board. So when the council is involved in that process, you're, you're many the ordinance so that everyone has the exact same application of items consistently. Instead, when the council is asking for specific, or councils, I should say, are asking for specific action to be taken on a property, then we have that potential for there to be discrimination between different groups, whether it be somebody who is, um, owner of a certain property, whether it's different landlords, um, whether it's because they are able to get their alder involved or not. And so those are inappropriate reasons for us to be changing the way that we, we do things. Instead, what the council's rule should be is if the way that the ordinance read is no longer creating a just result, it is the council's obligation to go revisit that ordinance so that that result can be rectified. If we are asking staff to change the way they administer it, that's something that's left to staff so that staff can, can follow their policies and still maintain compliance with the ordinance. So with this, what we are recommending at this point is that if there are concerns, if you guys are seeing concerns with how it's being applied to everybody, that, you know, whatever standards we've adopted just don't make sense for the city anymore, those are the things we need you to bring forward so that we can start making proposed revisions to the, to the ordinance so that we don't run into these issues. Because I think once we, once we correct the, um, ordinance, then any issues that you guys are running into with how they're being applied will be addressed as well.
So, and I want to be clear that if any, um, let's say we have a complaint on someone, and they send us an email and they say to us, we want you to work with our alder along with me. So we get that communication from that person, we will do that. We will cease the alder on all of those complaints. But if we get something from an alder that says, hey, um, can you, um, can you give me this information? Can you give this person more time? Whatever that is, you're probably gonna get an email response from us, and it's not meant to be not customer service friendly, but it's just gonna kind of remind you that the best way to do that is to refer that person to us and work with us directly. And we're gonna provide you the link again to how to get to that website to look things up. Just so there isn't that kind of conflict with an alder, you all have a position of power on this council, working with inspectors that go, jeez, what do I do now? This alder would like me to give more time, but it's really not appropriate. I mean, that's a struggle for our inspectors. So that's why we send this email out, which we don't mean to be uncustomer friendly. So that, that's all I have. Did we forget anything? Questions?
Yeah, I think overall, just from a big picture perspective, um, you know, I give our inspection team a ton of credit. I mean, the, the caseload that they handle, I mean, thirty-eight hundred cases a year, I mean, twenty-two thousand touchpoints. I mean, it's an unbelievable workload that's shared among very few inspectors and, right? I mean, that's why we're talking, um, you know, about that workload and how it can be most efficient. And every case is different. And in a lot of cases, um, you know, our inspectors do casework and, and really are trying to, at the end of the day, it is our job to enforce the health, safety, and welfare standards of the community. And we don't budge on that. What we do do, though, is, is understand that there are circumstances and situations that are individual to each case and each property. And we do so in working in a way, you know, our goal is compliance. And how we can best achieve that compliance and in terms of the policies we enact to move forward, um, I, I think there's understanding that sometimes there are, you know, situations that complicate matters. But I think we do our best, as long as those individuals, those property owners are making good faith efforts to bring those properties into compliance. I think we've been very, very good about working with those individuals. At the same time, we have to balance, you know, the health, safety, welfare of the neighbors and the whole neighborhood. And, you know, while we can be, um, you know, respectful and, and working with individuals on resolving these things, there also has to come a time where we say, look, you know, it's been three months, it's been six months, it's been a year. Um, we need to get this completed. And so I think, um, as you look at, at how we balance those things, you know, it is important, um, you know, for us to, to kind of document what we're doing and then, you know, so you can get an understanding of how we're working, um, you know, through those cases. But again, I would give our inspectors and our chief building official a lot of credit for, for looking at each case individually and, and trying to find the best way to achieve compliance in terms of maintaining that health, safety, and welfare.
Questions? Alder from the sixth.
Um, I got a question here too. Maybe you can explain to me, like, the exterior repairs and interior repairs. Fifteen-day notice to either correct or call inspector with plan and timeline. We have, you know, in my district, we got a lot of people on fixed incomes.
Mm-hmm.
And I assume that you work with them, because they probably don't have the money. Otherwise, they would have fixed it. And I assume that you have some kind of plan or help for these individuals?
So the fifteen days, you'll notice that it's to, to complete it.
Right.
Odds are pretty good they're probably not gonna complete it. But what we want is the communication. Um, because what we don't want to do is wait thirty days and then nothing's done, and then we start at thirty days. So the, the point of the fifteen days is you give us a call at fifteen days and say, what's the plan? Well, I can't afford it now, because we'll, we'll work with you. We'll give you time as long as we know that we're communicating and we're on the same plan to get it fixed. We do have rehab loan programs for owner occupants to help fix their property up. And that's a lot of times the first line of defense, is they'll send them over to our neighbor, our neighborhood specialist to work with them on a rehab loan. And we've done that quite a bit on homeowner situations.
Good. And then I have another one issue. Kennedy Park Neighborhood Association contacted me. A gentleman came to their meeting, and he was talking about the apartments on Herald Street. There was some very unsafe situation going on there. There were actually, this gentleman knows there were people living in the basement. So I went and I talked to, I don't know, did I talk to you, Cheryl? I talked to somebody, and they said, well, they can't go in. Inspectors cannot go in the apartment building unless that person called and actually reported it. It has to be somebody that lives in the building. And so I had to tell him there's nothing I can do, because that gentleman would not leave his contact information.
Well, we can, I mean, there are instances where we can follow up. Inspectors can just knock on doors and, right? I mean, I think, and if there's, if we believe it's a health and safety, we can get an inspection warrant to get inside.
Oh, okay.
If we have a credible witness that, you know, that a judge would sign.
Okay, I'll come in and talk to you about it, because, yeah, I think that's a very, yeah, that's a very unsafe situation. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Cheryl and staff, I appreciate the, the presentation. It's a, you know, being in inspections is, is a tough job. I mean, I've gone out on some inspections back years ago when you could, and it's, it's not easy confronting a homeowner who has something they need to do, you know? Been doing it, obviously, many years. It just seems more standoffish now. And the only reason I'm getting involved is because I've been asked to, you know? People don't understand it. They just, and you get that, they don't understand what they have to do. Or they have a lot of extenuating circumstances, either monetary or health. There's a lot of other reasons why things can't get done. And that's usually when we get involved, is like, hey, I'm running against this world block, and I just need help. And that's usually when we'll reach out, because we'll need background information to help us flesh out what's going on. Not only for that, but for the neighborhood, because sometimes there's neighborhood dynamics going on, right, with neighbors? And so before I just jump in, hey, I'm here, I'd like to know what's going on. And that's, that's what I've gotten for the past fifteen, sixteen years. And now it's, go look at this link. So, you know, when I said it was bad customer service, it is, because I represent that person and that neighborhood, and we're looking to work together to get it done, whatever it takes. So we're not separate, we're together.
What information are you looking for that isn't provided on our link?
Well, and as I just stated, kind of the surrounding information, the background information, what, what got it here, you know? What else is involved? And that, that helps me to, to go in and say, okay, I know the background information. I can help move this along, because a lot of times they're coming to us as their last-ditch effort. And if you can kind of understand it and say, hey, here's why I have to do it, and, you know, I can't really help you with that.
And Alders were privy to the complaint tracking for a long time.
Yep.
Which was the details from the inspectors. And it's, it's, our understanding, you are no longer privy to that information. That's
Well, that'd be interesting.
Like public record types of.
That'd be interesting to get maybe in a written opinion too, because we used to get it printed out, remember? It would be in our mailbox, pretty much. Every inspection in your district, you had a printed-out report of what was going on, and you could look through it and say, okay, okay, okay.
The complaint tracking.
You bet. And then it was just, instead of printing it off, we went to, you can look online. And that was a great system too, and now it's pretty much.
But that's where we pulled the complaint tracking off, because there's oftentimes confidential stuff in there, phone numbers. If there's work with Child Protective Services or those types of things.
Right.
We can't share that information.
There's some things that, obviously, we shouldn't know and don't need to know, but there's the background information. And I know you're busy, but you were busy fifteen years ago, and we had.
Well, we could just print them off back then.
No, but I would still get, if I sent off an email at ten o'clock at night, because I got a call at nine-thirty, I'd get an email back the next day saying, hey, I'd get an email back the next day saying, "Hey, you know, I got your email, here's kind of what's going on and I'll get back to you with some more." And now it's, "Here's a link."
Okay.
"Here's a link, go look at the link." And I'm like, "Well, that doesn't help me at all. It tells me kind of what's going on, but I already know that. Give me some more background information." And and I did hear, maybe you can clarify this or not. We we want compliance, not punishment, right? I mean, we want people to fix what needs to be fixed. And obviously, there's some people who flaunt it and flout it and maybe they need a little bit more of the punishment. But there's a lot of people who can't get it done. And it seems like, I've heard, there's more of an emphasis on reinspection. Keep reinspecting it. And every time, it's fifty bucks. So, you know, it's very easy to rack up several hundred dollars, a thousand dollars, especially for someone who can't afford it, who has no means to to pay that.
We took the re- first of all, you don't get a reinspection fee if you call us and talk to us. So the, if you get a reinspection fee, you have not called us, you haven't communicated, and you haven't done anything. That has been the only successful way for us to motivate someone to contact us and get the, get the ball rolling. Fifty dollars a day is cheaper than a citation. An inspector could issue a citation, that bogs up the law department, it's six hundred and ninety-one dollars. That's not helpful either. So we thought these reinspection fees, which they have been, and if you want to speak to those, like how we've been successful with those with the number of reinspection fees.
Well, I I I don't have the statistics right in front of me, but I can tell you that it's a, we issue the fifty dollars and at, say, the two fifty to four hundred range, we start seeing major compliance with people, whereas we didn't get that before. And it it continues, so it start, it goes kind of like this with compliance, and then it peters out and gets real slow. So in that up to the twenty range, we'll probably get about eighty-two percent compliance out of the people that have issues or violations. So it's much more effective and much quicker than what a citation is. A citation takes about seven months before you get compliance, whereas this we're seeing in about two months with with the reinspection approach.
Well, and those are, I mean, obviously, it's impressive statistics, and there are some bad actors out there who will drag their feet and they can clearly get it done. But do we have the ability for people who are, um, you know, elderly or don't have a fixed income or sick? Can you waive some of those fees afterwards if you find out, "Okay, that person was in hospital for a month?"
Yes.
Okay, and that's, that's good to know.
All the, all those emails that I get and I say, "Reform to me." I'm the one that they would come to and explain the unique circumstances and we'd talk through it and see if we'd come up to.
I think we had one like that just going on here in the last couple of weeks. Good, no, and that's perfect. Um, and I understand this is going to Personnel Committee next, right? So, okay, we can do more discussion there, but.
And and just a point, when it gets to protection and policy, know that it's been through the system, that they've already talked to Paul and, you know, we've negotiated where we can, just so you know that. Once it gets to that appeal process.
Yeah. And I don't, I'm not in any way, you know, badmouthing you guys, because you guys are awesome. You are the right hand of an alderperson. We can work together to get a lot of good stuff done. But on the other hand, keep us informed. I think that's what I'm asking.
Right.
When I, when I ask for information, just kind of clue me in on what's going on, so I don't go charging in, which I tend to do, into a situation that I could have been apprised of.
That's our struggle is that we're, we're told, we cannot share that complaint tracking, so.
No, I don't necessarily need the complaint tracking. I mean, I I'll get emails back from different inspectors. Some are better than others with just a little bit of the history to say, "Here's kind of where it started. Here's where it's going." And I'm like, "Oh, okay, well, I didn't know any of that. I wasn't told any of that." I mean, if you could do that.
I'm trying to work it through in my head, how, okay, because I I would ask that you at least go to the website first.
Oh, yeah, well, obviously.
And see, you know, if you can find out your answers there. I mean, at that point, I guess I would ask you to call me or Paul. Because we'd prob-, I mean, we'll get back to you, probably get back to you faster, right, with that information?
I'll email you.
Well, right. Give us a call or email us, because I'm thinking if you're calling us, there's a problem. Because it's not going through the process properly, it's been too long, not fixed or repaired, neighbors are complaining. Then we should look at that. I'm, I'm thinking, right?
Well, I think we can, we can work this out to a great conclusion, so, thank you.
Alder from the ninth.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you for the presentation. It's, it's very good information, and I would echo Alder Weary. I know this is a very difficult job and, um, I work with my inspector very closely, Donna, and sometimes just, gosh, I, yikes. So, um, thank you for what you do.
Yikes in a good way, right?
So just a couple of questions. Could you talk me through a little bit about, um, your department is not responsible, correct me if I'm wrong, but for all inspections, right? Public Works does some inspections as well. Can you just maybe explain it to me and then, like, are you guys on the same page with respect to, right, they do noxious weeds, right?
They do weeds and they do, they like long grass and they do snow removal.
Okay.
Oh, and tipper carts.
Okay.
Tipper carts placed in the wrong place.
Okay. Are you guys on the same page in terms of how you consistently approach this? And the reason I ask is because, uh, last I recall, I still get the noxious weed complaint report from my district every week, and that seems to be inconsistent with what I'm hearing from your department.
Well, the noxious weed reports just how, which properties they cut for noxious weeds, right? I mean, I don't know what that is, the noxious weed report.
I guess, is that a complaint or did they actually provide the service?
That would be a Public Works question. I'm assuming that there was a complaint for noxious weeds and they went out and cut it and billed the owner. That would be the standard operating procedure, but that runs through Public Works. We don't take those complaints in through our department.
Okay.
We refer them to Public Works.
Okay, and and it may be my, the the broader point is I hope we can understand, right, as a, as an average citizen in our community, maybe they don't get the difference, right, in terms of, uh, different complaints, different departments, different procedures? So, um, I I just think that's, that is an area that's taken me a long time to figure out, and I do this. You know, and I think about the average person who, uh, might be subjected to a complaint and just understanding that process, so. The other piece that maybe I would, I would ask is, I, if if alders, if sort of the new policy, which I I support, right, is to let staff take care of their stuff, let us focus on policy. It does, though, have this unintended consequence, for better or for worse, where it removes alders maybe from that information gathering component. And I've always been a firm believer that for us to make the policy, you have to have data, you have to have information. And if we're kind of removed from that, is there a way that maybe we can incorporate some type of reporting uh, from the inspections department? You know, like, hey, we're seeing, you know, a high level of complaints in this area. It might require, you know, I I don't know what it is, right? You guys do this every day, but information that might be useful for us as a city council when making policy-driven decisions.
I, I think we can provide whatever data you're looking for.
I'm not sure what I'm looking for, right, because you guys do this every day. And it's, it's one of those things where you can, when you're working with the residents in your district, you can quickly identify trends that maybe cause you to take a step back and be like, "Okay, yeah, that's weird. Why are we getting a large number of complaints here?" And if we're removed from that, we no longer have that data now. And so now it's hard for us to make policy changes and we don't have that data.
I think, um, I hate to say the word, because it's actually been a good year, but it, I think the the rad problem we had last summer is a good example of that. Our numbers are down, by the way. The complaints are down this year, which is good. But that was a situation where we started seeing that popping up in specific districts and we're like, "Wait a minute here." When we came to you and said, "We need some money, let's do some proactives in these areas," so.
This is a perfect example, though, of a report that I think would be incredibly useful for us to, uh, to see, so. Uh, and again, I don't know what those things are, I'm happy to work with you on that. But I do think there would be some great value for the council members here to understand sort of where the complaints are coming from. And if, excuse me, if, uh, policies are in alignment, right, with with what the ultimate goals are.
One of my goals is to map inspection complaints. So we can see where maybe more challenged areas of the city are, so we can concentrate the efforts there in those areas. So something like that I'm thinking you're looking for.
Yeah.
Which, yep.
Thanks. Keep up the good work.
Thanks, Alder. Alder from the fourth.
Thank you, Your Honor. You guys do great work. In all my years with the police department, um, whenever we needed you, you were there right away. You knew who to contact, what to do to get situations cleaned up. You've been a huge asset for the community of police officers, and I just want to say I really appreciate everything you've done. And even this past weekend, I had the media contact me about a home in my neighborhood, and it sounded pretty bad for the city until I was able to talk to some staff and find out that, in reality, involved an elderly resident, um, who was not with the property anymore. And it came down to basically what they were talking about, a lack of communication, not from the city's part. Because the city, when I looked it up, certainly made a lot of more effort than I would have thought normal, but it was the the resident. And and it's just an issue, but the connections remain and it's being resolved. I also like, though, for you to explain, because this is something I was frustrated with earlier, fees versus citations. If I understood correctly from my tutorial, and it took me a little while to catch on, the fees are a a way of poking them to get compliance, but it also can be put onto their tax bill.
Yes.
So when we issue a citation and it goes to municipal court and they play, "Let's make a deal because we really don't want to go to trial on this, so let's take these ten citations, reduce them down to this." And then they don't pay, now it turns into a warrant that if they do go to jail, we end up paying a turnkey fee to house those people. And there was one slumlord that, I believe, opted to spend sixty or ninety days in jail, in which we paid forty-five dollars a day to house him. As opposed to a inspection fee, which at fifty dollars is a heck of a lot less than six hundred, but we can put it on their tax bill. And it's easier for us to collect that money.
And by the way, the the property's still not compliant. Because you serve your time, you you start, you have to start all over again.
So, I mean, even though the inspection may seem mean, but from what they're saying statistically, one or two inspection fees gets the compliance, which actually costs the homeowner or the property owner a lot less. And in the long run, we lose less money out of the whole business. So, uh, that was, it was real beneficial to sit down and be able to talk to them and have that explained to me. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder from the sixth.
I just want to say too that Cheryl and all the staff there have always been very courteous to me. I've come in several times asking questions. And being a kind of a new alder, I mean, my first term, um, I had to ask questions because I don't know the ordinances. They change over the years. And I did see the book, it's this big, we don't get it. So to find all these. And I, and to me, I like personally asking people because it's a faster interchange, I think, than calling or sometimes even going online and looking, because then sometimes you still got questions. So I do come down, and they've always been very helpful.
I think, I think sometimes the issue is, though, it's not the communication, it's the direction. Like if an alder gives direction to someone in the field, that can be problematic because sometimes it's not the right answer. And now, and we've had the situation where someone has said to us, "Well, the alder said that I could do this." "What do you mean, I can't do this?" "The alder was not correct on that," right? So that's why we encourage, you know, you work with that person, but have them call us, work with us, get us involved with that, so we can make sure that the right information's getting sent down.
That's the same thing with me. I want to make sure, if I do say anything to a constituent, I want to make sure that what I'm saying is accurate. Exactly.
And I would say just ha, don't say it. Let us say it.
Okay. I'll give them your name and number. I'll, I'll find your cell phone number to a home phone number and give it to them. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mayor. Cheryl and staff, I've always had, uh, very good experiences with your department. As some of the alders said, it's a very difficult job. You're dealing with the public and the, the public, especially comes to issues of government involvement, intrusion, in their opinion, volatile, volatile tempers. It's a very dangerous jobs at times. And and I think we should never forget that from a city council perspective. There, there were, uh, again, given the fact that I've almost always had very good interactions with all of the inspectors, there was a situation about six months ago, and I'm not going to mention personalities or names, obvious, obviously, but, uh, there were a situation where constituents had r- reached out to an inspector, didn't get response. I then was asked to intervene, which I did. And then I called a particular inspector, left several messages pleading with this person for just a simple response back, which never came. I then went up to the next level and then a level higher, and then the issues were resolved from a member of your staff. How would you expect, how would you want those situations to be handled? Because I don't want to be harassing an inspector, but I would think after two or three or four, in this case, maybe five or six times, no response, that that makes me look bad as an alder and makes the city look bad.
In my mind, that's not an inspection problem, that's a staff problem. If there, if you're not getting a response. So if you have an issue with an inspector that's not getting back to you for any reason, go to Paul. He's the supervisor for the inspectors. And if he's out, come to me. Go to Kevin. So you should not have to wait that long to get a response from an inspector.
Okay, thank you. It was combined with a couple of other issues I was dealing with and and those constituents had, uh, so so that, again, six months ago was kind of a, a negative experience for me, which was kind of an aberration. I never really experienced that. And that's when I saw Alder Weary's communication, I was like, "Aha, maybe there's something deeper going on that I'm not aware, but it doesn't seem like that's the case."
Was that just the one case, the one instance?
It was, it was that, a couple, I can call you about it, I don't want to get into details, but just know that it was just a combination of several different issues at one time that kind of, kind of frustrated me and that I got more involved than I ever ha- had to or needed to or even wanted to, so.
You should be able to get those answers quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Any quest, further questions? Alder from the tenth.
Thank you, Your Honor. Cheryl and Paul and Kevin, I, I appreciate all that you've done too. And I've, I had the opportunity to work in your department for twenty-five years, so I under, understand what you go through. You know, I think a lot of times what happened at Protection and Policy, I mean, there were times where folks would come in and they, the fifty dollar, fifty dollar, fifty dollar. And it seemed like, oh, boy, they're really getting picked on. But I think with at least seeing this demonstration, it it helps a little bit more. And I think most of us on council feel that we don't want to interfere that way. But I understand where all the burnet is coming from, because I think there are, are times where it's like, there's, we just want to talk to someone or just get an answer of some sort. A lot of times, and, you know, Alder Weary can attest to this too, but there are times where, uh, I have to rely on citizens a lot of times. They'll say, "Hey, Mark, we got a, there's a condemned house over here," or, "There, you know, there's a vacant house over here, blah, blah. We saw rats," you know? So, you know, right away, we're being pulled into this and I'm, I just as soon hand it off to you. And I think for the most part, that has worked. But, you know, we, a lot of this is complaint driven, so if people don't complain, you know, so I do rely on my citizens quite a bit for this, you know, they kind of, and, you know, neighbors are interesting. They get on each other's case about any number of things. And we can talk about that some other time. But I appreciate what your office does. And, uh, I think it'll be interesting at Personnel to go through this. I feel that maybe we, we should look at the ordinance and maybe there are some things that we tweak a little bit. But I think for the most part, I appreciate your openness to at least talk about this. And I think that we, as alders, appreciate it and I think, uh, we can move forward. So, thank you.
All right. Well, I think it's unanimous. You guys are great. Thanks for everything you do.
The inspectors.
Appreciate the presentation as well. We have a motion, but we don't need one. This is informational, so we're going to move along to reported Protection and Policy Committee granting operator licenses. Motion made by Alder from the eighth, seconded by Alder from the eleventh, to approve report N, which is the report of the Protection and Policy Committee granting operator licenses. Any names for which you'd like to be recorded as abstaining? Any names to handle separately? Hearing none. All in favor of the report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The report has been approved. On to report of the Plan Commission. Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the second, to approve report O, which is the report of the Plan Commission from the meeting on November eleven, twenty nineteen. Any items under this report you wish to handle separately? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. That is approved. On to the report of the Finance Committee. Motion made by Alder from the first, seconded by Alder from the seventh, to approve report P, which is the report of the Finance Committee from the meeting on November twelve, twenty nineteen. Any items you wish to handle separately under this report? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have it. The report has been approved. Report of the Park Committee. Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the eighth, to approve report Q, which is the report of the Park Committee from the meeting on November twelve, twenty nineteen. Any items to handle separately here?
Number one.
Item one will be handled separately. Hearing none others. All in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The report has been approved with the exception of item one. Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the first. Alder, uh, from the tenth pulled the item. He has the floor.
All right, thank you, Your Honor. Just, uh, I'd like to give some kudos to our Parks Department and Director Ditchite on looking at, uh, ways to, uh, get creative. And I think you got very creative as far as the Jefferson School swap and the Helen Keller easement. I, I'm thankful for that. I, I've, a proponent of connecting trails. And I'm hoping for the West Side Trail to get all the way up to the Mountain Bay Trail. This is a big step towards that. And I appreciate the effort between the city, the village, Bay Baptist. Bay Baptist Church, Helen Keller School, the school district, I mean, it would be nice to see a lot of projects like this in the city, where you have a number of entities getting together and trying to work out things, and I, I appreciate your efforts on this. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. I would second that. Any further comments?
Seeing no other requests to speak, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, item has been approved. Report of the Economic Development Authority.
To approve.
Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the first, to approve Report R, which is the Report of the Economic Development Authority from the meeting on November 11, 2019. Any items to handle separately here? Hearing none. All in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, the report has been approved. On to Sustainability.
To approve.
Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the fifth, to receive in... Yeah, I think we're receiving place on file here? Uh, no, holding this report. Okay. All right. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. Report, yeah.
Are they looking to get a grant to do the solar panels? Solar panels, as far as they're costly to purchase and the payback is very minimal, and I don't want to see the city of Green Bay, you know, entered into a large financial, we don't have the money on that part of it, but if, if they're looking to get a grant as far as moving forward with, with solar panels, I think that would be great, but I think they have to look at the cost very closely, so when the committee looks at it, that, you know, they take that in consideration about...
Want a clarification?
We'll have Ms. Jeffrey's weigh-in here, just to clarify things.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Randallist. So this solar project would come from the money that was budgeted from the excess stadium tax to Elend Electric. They were allocated $60,000 from the excess stadium tax, and so they're going to use those funds in order to install projects in various places in town. Also, the savings from the solar installation should be, and this is something we will be talking about at Sustainability, put into a fund to maintain that solar apparatus.
I know they're using them on streetlights and different things, you know, right away, so I think that's correct. But in other words, what I'm talking about is, you know, you can get into large numbers of solar panels, and there is a, also in the act of disposing solar panels, it is a hazardous type of thing, so there are a lot of things, and it's a long-term, you know, they last about 20 years, basically, about 20 years as far as, you know, itself, and you have to dispose of it properly.
John.
The cost is relatively still quite high.
He speaks, he needs to speak in the mic.
Anyway, I'm just giving you that information, you know, it sounds like this is important to them. You know, actually, what project do you use them on here, or not?
Um, so yes, I can answer that question. The committee was going to consider the recommendations from Elend Electric. We have, so essentially, what Elend Electric did was to look at the buildings that we have in City Hall, in the city, and determine which buildings had electric bills over $500 a month, and those would be the ones that they felt would be the most amenable to receiving solar, and so we have three buildings potentially on our list, two fire stations, and then also a building out at Bay Beach Amusement Park. In addition to, um, excuse me, in addition to repairing and replace, really replacing the solar array at Light Park.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Mr. Randallist.
Thank you. The committee's doing a good job. Thank you, Randy. That's it.
All right, we're on to Report of the Personnel Committee. Oh, Alder from the sixth, apologies.
I don't have the statistics here in front of me, but no, solar has become a lot more efficient, effective, cost efficient. Germany has, I read a very technical, technical report on it, so I didn't understand the whole thing, but they have really improved the, the life and the cost and the output, output, output on solar. So, no, it's not, it's not that costly, it depends on the insulation, yes, but it's not as costly as, as you had mentioned, Alder, okay? So, it's becoming more effective.
Alder.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. All right. Thank you. On to Report of the Personnel Committee.
To approve.
Motion made by Alder from the first, seconded by Alder from the, was it twelfth? Sounds good. You bet. To approve Report T, which is the Report of the Personnel Committee from the meeting on November 12, 2019. Any items to handle separately here?
Three and four.
Items three and four will be handled separately, hearing none, others. All in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. Report has been approved with the exception of items three and four.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the second, to approve.
I think we should go in a closed session, I'll call.
Okay. Alder from the fourth.
The council may convene in closed session pursuant to statute 19.85, sub 1, sub E, Wisconsin statute, for purpose of deliberating or negotiating public employee contracts for competitive or bargaining reasons. The council may thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to 19.85, sub 2, Wisconsin statute, to report the results of closed session and consider the balance of the agenda.
Thank you, Alder. Need a motion to go into closed?
We made the motion.
You made the motion? Motion made, seconded by Alder from the seventh, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and we are closed.
Would you return to regular order of business?
Motion made by Alder from the first, seconded by Alder from the seventh, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. We are back in regular order of business.
I'd like to, um, that we proceed, the staff proceed as directed in closed session.
Motion made by Alder from the first, seconded by Alder from the seventh, to proceed as directed in closed session, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Record it, please.
Going to use the board, Alder?
Yes.
We will use the board. Decorum here. Yeah, okay, that's right. Vote is 10 to 2. We are on to receiving place on file.
Motion to receive in place on file.
Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the tenth, to receive in place on file, the municipal court and building permit reports for October 2019. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The ayes have it, the report has been received and placed on file. On to resolutions.
You may address suspension of the rules, adopt resolutions one and two, together with one roll call vote.
Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the ninth, to suspend the rules, take up these items with one roll call vote. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, the rules are suspended. Entertained motion?
To...
To adopt resolutions one and two? Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the eighth, to adopt resolutions one and two, please use the board. It's not coming back. Twelve oh. Ordinance is first reading.
You may address suspension of the rules, advance ordinances one through three to a second reading.
Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the first, to suspend the rules, take up these items with one roll call vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, the rules are suspended.
To advance.
Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the first, to advance items one through three to a second and final reading. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.